I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Don, did you have public discussion here?
Yeah, I have a concern about drainage thing that was hooked into our drain 130 main. And this is a copy, it's more, you may have more than one copy, I don't know. It's printed all quick.
Thank you.
The top of the.
I can share with you.
Pardon?
No, I'm good.
The top of the map is north and the highlighted area is the end of the drainage district main. There's a junction box there. I have two coming up from northeast corner side. I have two mains coming into that junction box. And my neighbor to the south has a eight inch coming in or six inch coming in there. And one of my mains goes up into the neighboring farm up in section four. But my concern is last year, the neighbor in northwest corner put a new tile, he hooked. Originally tried to hook it in my main, I stopped that because that junction box is already overloaded. So he went over and hooked into the main southwest of the junction box with a darker or wider red lines at, which is legal. However, he did not put a, in fact, be wide in to not restrict drainage from these. Actually, myself and three other landowners, I have a picture wanting to put in. Like you said, what you guys just handed out. This is an example of what was put in, that's fifteen inch tile with seminoes. And they came up that way, they, with a connector which protrudes. You see inside the tile, it protrudes inside the tile which does restrict our drainage. And this is what the drain 130 says you should have. It's right in the construction of the drain 130, all laterals are supposed to have a Y. That brings the water in without restriction. And then this is a copy of the drainage district highlighted, what the engineer wants it done. I have a copy of this for everybody.
You gave me one a couple of days ago.
But I don't think you have a complete of this.
No.
The front page is the drain 130.
Thank you.
Statement of what should be put there. The following pages are basically codes of Iowa. It says you cannot restrict or impede drainage in a drain open tile or open, I mean, open day. Again, the codes 468, 148, 468, 149, 468, 618, all say you cannot block or impede drainage in a drainage district asset. I don't know what the answer is here outside of take, digging it up and putting the proper connection in there. And this is, this is the drainage district tile, being it's on the last fifteen feet of the district tile. I know it's going to impede my drainage and three other landowner drainage. What do you suggest? Did I put a request for repairs? This really should have been an expense on the landowner who installed that tile.
Who's the landowner?
Technically, I don't want to get in trouble here, the landlord of the northwest quarter of section nine.
Do you see it there in your book?
And at the time this was being put in, I talked to the drainage, I was there when this was put in. And I talked to the contractor and he had three other employees there and he basically told me to get my onto there. And with three guys standing there and they were, you know, I'm not easily intimidated years ago, but when I have four people sitting there telling me to get the hell off my side of the fence, I tend to do that. But I did video that called my neighbor to the southwest. He says, fine, you can be on my property. So I did video that part of this installation of that, what you're looking at.
I don't know if it wasn't installed.
I did call the NDS yesterday to set up my, my workover, the NDS salesman for our area. And to get kind of a cost on what a proper Y would run, would run. And he told me around $200. And I, this is a concrete main, the drainage district tile is concrete. I called the concrete out of Humboldt and they do make a Y. But it comes in eight foot concrete, you know, you have to buy it treated fifteen inch tile. And asking what that cost will be, he said around $920. But then would be to size another tile in drainage district tile, which are probably thirty inches. Would be hard to match.
How big a tile did they bring in, a twelve inch?
Pardon?
How big a tile did they bring in?
They better tiled it.
Yeah, was that a twelve inch tile that they dumped into?
Oh, the tile coming into that is the NDS, because they brought, there's another outlet to that northwest quarter to the south. It comes up the road to ensure. And it's a fourteen inch tile coming up there. So about two thirds of that farm is drained, that outlet, that farm was never drained into these. Where they didn't hook up, never, whatever was hooked that way. So they ran approximately twenty, twenty-five acres in that eight inch tile coming into that darker red line there.
Is the, is the drainage district tile of fifteen?
Yes.
Okay. I think that, is that what you were asking, Roger?
Right before the junction box where my two wells come in, it turns into an eighteen, pick a wedge junction box. Probably to, rather than have two tile coming into the junction box, it is hooking into one and then each junction box. A neighbor to the southeast, he has a six inch going in there. Well, it is put, like I said, there's four landowners involved in this above that connection. Better print it more efficient, better ran out of ink.
I'd take a lot of ink.
Well, what do you do with it?
Well, I guess I would, I mean, I would think it probably needs to be taken care of and, and on a larger scale besides this, it's probably something we should address. Cause with the televising I've done recently, we've run into several issues with connections like this. They impede the water flow, but they also affect, affect the other aspects of the system. So. Probably needs to be addressed in some form, but I think it probably should be the responsibility of the landowner, the contractor that put it in the first place, rather than the district. To install it properly. Roger, you had any thoughts?
Who was the contractor?
Pardon?
Who was the contractor?
Contractor, Don Harris.
Remember?
Yeah, he was not a happy camper when he hooked into my private tile. And I says, I don't joke, you can't be doing that. And that's feel. So when they did the other, that's what causes ill feeling when, when I was trying to watch the other side.
Well, this seems pretty straightforward to me as far as, I, I guess, either having them install a proper Y in there or, or at the expense of them to have a county.
If anything is done, I would request that what you supervise be there to watch it because I want to make sure this thing is done the way it's supposed to be done. Dig it up and close it up and say it's done deal. I've been around the block a few times in my lifetime. I've seen a lot of, you know, I was on board twenty years. I've seen a lot of strange things done in drainage district tile. Stop signs stuck in between tile, panes of glass in tile, buckets in tile, rocks in tile. So it happens.
I probably would suggest that we have Marge write a letter to the landowner to the northwest so they install the tile. Asking him to put the proper connection in and to give us a time and date when they do it. So that supervisor can go and watch what's getting done. And that will, it would be at their expense because they didn't put the correct hook up into the tile. That would, that would be my suggestion.
Just start with a letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is most drainage district tile is already overloaded. We don't need restrictions. This thing, if we had five or six people down the line that did exactly the same thing, there'd be nothing left for drainage.
Cause I don't want to see the district pay for it.
No, I don't think it's a district expense either.
Right.
Is that good for you, Don?
Pardon?
Is that good with you?
Yeah, all I'm asking is to, you know, put in those drainage district layout says to call for be there a Y or some transitions to keep the flow flowing in a proper direction.
No.
And no restrictions.
Yeah.
We'll have Marge send a letter and go from there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that more during Drainage here today and see if we can get put together. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
And when they do do the work out there, Don, if you notice something, I mean, you can always let me know too. I, I know, I'm saying.
What's happening there, there is maybe any notice I just haven't been seeing over there other than building this happens.
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay. Well, don't see any other public discussion, so we'll move on to approving the agenda in minutes. Do I have a motion to that effect? Thanks. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thanks. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. We've got the wellness and.
Safety.
Yep, wellness and safety minutes. They're in our folder. Anyone? Got any questions, anything? Or safety committee minutes? All right, we'll acknowledge those. Then wellness.
So I'm not sure that I received any wellness minutes yet.
I saw the safety ones in the folder, but I didn't.
I didn't find wellness.
Yeah, I don't think that we've received those yet. So those aren't in the minutes.
Let's see if.
I was gonna check my email to see if I got anything, but it's taken a minute to come up.
Nope, I don't see any.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that we can wait till we get those.
Yep. Okay. Next up is discussion on solar ordinance. Do we want to talk this now or move this to the end of our agenda? So we can do our other business and then come back and have more in-depth discussion on this. I think it would make more sense to do it later once we have everything else talked off, but what do you guys think?
You're gonna do it after drainage?
Yeah, right at, right at the end. Yep. Okay.
That's, that's fine.
We'll save that for later. Uh, do you want to call Doug up?
Yep. Good morning, Doug. We are ready for you. Yep, thanks, bud.
Think I might over.
We'll just inundate and we'll get you some vacation with papers.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just.
He died like three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Well, it takes a lot of vacation.
He's got a rough life.
Are you pre-tationed?
I'm gonna go on vacation when the weather's good and I'll.
It's probably good where you said.
Probably.
Are these in Louisiana?
Yeah.
Somewhere down there?
Way down south.
Yeah.
Could be going Cancun chasing chickens. You ever been to Cancun?
Yeah.
Chickens everywhere.
Florida, isn't it? What do they got going on in Florida right now? Some big deal?
I don't know.
There's something. I seen it on.
Like an event?
Yeah.
I don't even know.
Morning.
Good morning, Doug.
We're gonna do all that, Doug. You'll never get done.
It's not as much as how it looks.
You got some contracts for us for resurfacing projects?
Yes. Last week, the Iowa Department of Transportation, there was money for three resurfacing projects. And they have, we've reviewed the tabs. Everything was in order. The I O D O T has had everything in order and I recommend that the board would act on the resolution to award contract. And then also it allows or directs the county engineer to sign the contracts once all the documents are, are in place.
All right, and our resolution number is zero three twenty-six twenty-four zero one. Is there any questions?
What were the three?
Uh, there is a location map I believe in the folder.
I thought I saw it somewhere.
A sixteen up north from the west county line to P thirty. P forty from A twenty-one to A sixteen and A thirty from lead yard over to one sixty-nine.
Okay, yep, that's what I was thinking.
All right. Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Move to approve.
Okay. I'll second it. Any further discussion or questions?
This is resurfacing, not mixing up in place again?
Uh, the project, the farm to market project, A sixteen is a colder place, recycling. And then resurfacing over the top. And the other two projects are just resurfacing.
Two inches of that?
Two inches, yes.
Two?
A sixteen, that needs a lot of.
Yeah, we, we had hoped to do from the west county line over to highway one sixty-nine. But funds, we don't have enough funds to do that. So.
That needs it.
Yes, we have a few roads that way as well, so.
Any idea what time they're gonna do it?
Uh, I do not right now. I don't know what their schedule is.
Which one was the one where they're gonna recycle and then do a paving on top?
Uh, A sixteen.
Okay. And the other two are just resurfacing?
Correct.
A sixteen's kind of bad shape.
Yeah.
Didn't get any better, I don't think.
No. All right. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Knaff?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes. Motion.
Did you state run out of funds or did we?
Well, our farm to market, it, it, well, part of it is it's just taking more dollars to do so many miles. We have had large construction budgets the last few years, but that has been reduced. All right, thanks, Tammy.
All right. Next up, road vacation.
Correct. A few weeks ago, we spoke about a request from Don Heldorfer to request a portion of that Ninetieth Avenue. I have visited with all the landowners on the south and Karen Heldorfer on the east side of the north, north part of that road. No one seems to be, no one uses that road except for the Heldorfers. So I think moving forward, it would, it would be good to get that vacated. If we were to do it, I'd like to vacate from the creek north, keep that road crossing there. However, Glenn Preston, I need to still visit with him. I left that kind of in his head as we discussed it. And he wasn't sure how, what his feelings were for that. But it's something we can talk about at the hearing. This will be, if we move forward, it would be advertised to vacate all or a portion of that Ninetieth Avenue from three forty street to three fifty street. But it does not mean that all of it would be vacated. It would be a decision that the board would make after the public hearing. So.
So you visited with Glenn Preston already about vacating the road? It's just which option you have?
Correct. I've visited with, with Phil Heldorfers who made the request.
Yep.
I visited with Glenn Preston, Karen, Karen Heldorfer, Steve Kolesch, Karen Gray and Ron Gray. And Ron Gray's wife is the, uh, part of the trust there. So. I would recommend that the board would move forward with this. This would just be establishing the public hearing. And I do not have a date or time in there, something that.
Do you have any to? Do you have anything on the calendar at any certain times coming up?
Sixteenth of April, we have completion hearing for DD sixty sub one and reclassification annexation for DD sixty sub one at ten and ten oh five. Otherwise, besides the public hearing that I'm gonna ask for to set for that same day, that's all I have on the calendar.
Okay.
And that would, April sixteenth would represent the soonest really, with the notifications that are required.
I don't have my crystal ball turned on for what harvest or what planting's gonna look like, but is there, would there be any issues if we did it more like mid to late May?
It does not matter to me.
I mean, cause they're not gonna tear anything out this spring for planting probably. I would think maybe later May or early June. Try and, try and give people opportunity to get through fieldwork, but you guys got any thoughts?
I'm thinking it makes any difference. I, I didn't think twenty eighth of May would probably be a really good date because most people will be done by then.
Yep, sure hope so.
I think it would infringe on any of the landowners.
And I don't, I don't, I wouldn't think there'd be any big rush to it at this point. So, yeah, I mean, I'd be good with the twenty eighth.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, do we need a time or just the date, Doug?
Uh, we should have a time for that as well.
Would there be any issue to doing it right away at like eight oh five or something, first thing in our meeting?
I have no problem with it.
That way, that way, anyone that came in could know that it's beginning.
Let's do it at eight oh five.
May twenty.
I'll make that into the motion.
Okay.
May twenty eighth at what time?
Eight oh five AM here at the board supervisor's room. Yep. Okay. I'll second that motion. Oh, maybe twenty eighth. Any further discussion, any questions, comments, anything? And we, this is in resolution, so I'll call for roll call vote.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Knaff?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes. Oh, and I didn't, the resolution number zero three twenty-six twenty-four oh two.
Yes, okay. Just to verify that. So, thank you.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
We can do a new one if needed. If you want a cleaner one for the record. Do you wanna clean our one for the record? Alright. Noxious weeds.
Yeah, we received a quote from B and W who has done our roadside. Noxious weed control for some, many years. They did not change their rates for us, they were the same as what they had last year. Total estimate cost for spraying would be one hundred six thousand nine hundred twenty four dollars and twenty five cents. This year's spraying would be the north and would be broadcast, all roads traveled, all road right away sprayed. And then the south third would be thistle spot treatment. Continuing in our rotation that we've done. I would recommend that the board would approve of.
Proposal.
I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, up to construction right away.
Correct, yeah, the bridge is actually, construction has started, but last week we. Did not take the formal action, close the road, so this resolution would officially close. That road, P sixty four during the construction of that bridge.
Another resolution.
I would move to close the road with resolution number four three twenty six point four oh three.
Perfect.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote please.
I did second it, yep, yep, yep.
I didn't hear you.
Uh, jerks.
Yep.
Whacker.
Yes.
Naff.
Yes.
Stucker.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously.
I forgot it was closed the other day coming south of the Tyke. No good way to get around it to get to Lurin.
Did you call your supervisor to complain?
Almost.
You should, I can listen, that was not. I had to go to Lurin the other day and I had to go around.
Did you?
Yeah, because that's my street shot down south.
Oh, sure.
If that's a street you can get to Lurin.
Yep, yep.
That would be. Alright.
Last week we mailed a letter to Harlan Metzger, did the board receive a copy of that? Just wanted to make sure if there were any questions or comments or concerns with that letter. Construction, the project at south of Taitaka, they did get a pile bent. Driven last week, so things are going, going well, they're now taking out the south abutment and they'll be driving that abutment piling next. Bridge down by George Gunter, they're working on getting that deck on there and. In time, get put steel on that, a couple more weeks and they will probably be pouring that deck. Uh, we got a couple of open positions, you have the mechanic shop. Looking at some requests for some quotes, however, I've got a lot of things going on right now, I don't know if I'll get quotes for equipment out this week or not. Uh, that's all for the roads zoning, we do have a meeting scheduled next Monday for the planning and zoning commission. Depending on. I, I would assume that the planning and zoning commission are gonna recommend to the board supervisors that. The zoning be changed on the parcel, I did. Put in your packet. Some information on that, so I'd just like to go over it real quick. To make the board familiar with it, so you're. You'll know next week, you'll have a, something to go over next week.
Does everyone see it in the packet?
I'm navigating to that right now, so. It's in the engineer folder and it's client change of zoning.
Yep, I think we all got it.
So there is just a location map of that area. You can see that to the, I guess first of all. All the way around the airport when zoning was established in nineteen seventy three was. Zoned I three light industrial, so this would be north of the railroad tracks and in that section. The land south of the railroad tracks is zoned agriculture, the land east of one hundred avenue is zoned agriculture. Sometime nineteen seventy eight or nineteen seventy nine, a person purchased some land. Acreage out there and built some house and built some outbuildings. I do not have, I cannot find any record of that, whether somebody came and got a building permit or they just built the house. But now, someone is trying to sell the house. The lender for the purchaser. Wants that to be zoned, I guess should have said this earlier, anything zoned industrial, you're not supposed to have family to own it. So the lender would like to have confidence that if there was some sort of disaster that happened, they would be able to rebuild their house. I do not see that there's any problem with this, like I said, the adjacent land is zoned agriculture, this would just be making that agriculture. And we'll see what the planning and zoning commission, their decision, I would assume that they are going to. Recommend to the board supervisors to change that as well.
Okay. Is that light industrial I one or I three?
I think it's I one.
Okay.
I want light industrial. And then the Cassouth Waste Management Association, there's a financial insurance report that's due Monday. We do not have the audit for fiscal year twenty three. Until we have that audit, we cannot have that assurance completed, if we would have that Monday, I may. I'll probably put it on the agenda to take action and approve of that, but we might just have to postpone it till the following Tuesday. And then we do have an annual meeting for the Waste Management Association, April ten. And then lastly. Secondary road department has been storing. A pallet of documents, uh, this is a soil survey of Cassouth County from nineteen eighty three. We have. Twenty six boxes of twelve of these. We have a few hundred dedications of courthouse from June of nineteen fifty five. And we have a few dozen pictorial acts and atlases of Cassouth County, it's a combination. Of two documents, it's kind of an interesting. Interesting document, I think it's from about nineteen eighty six, maybe nineteen eighty seven, but it's got a. It's got some plats in it, it's got some history or some landowners. History of it, and then it's got pictures of some of those landowners as well. I would like to get them moved out of the secondary road department, I think what happened is we were cleaning out the vault. A few years ago, a decade ago, and we didn't want to throw those away. I guess I wondered if the board had a good way of, of offering them to somebody or. How, how you would like to take care of that, if somebody would want them, I, I would have no problem with that, but it's up to the board.
Where are they currently stored?
They're in our garage.
Across the street?
Yeah.
Well, I think we can check with the libraries and.
But they're not gonna want. How many?
I'm fairly confident that the libraries would have these and I certainly can email the libraries to verify.
Sure.
I would be surprised if they did not, I guess, but that's a good idea, Josh. Do that.
Get rid of a few of those.
I mean, even a couple copies of each could go there, but you're still not gonna get rid of much.
No, no, I mean, at least, at least have. Is that something on our, even the county. Facebook page, you know, to put out there and if.
Sure.
People are interested, that might be a good way to.
Sure.
Is there anything we have to comply with as far as laws or anything to get rid of that stuff?
I, I rarely.
I'm guessing they were free.
I don't think there are any actual documents, I think it's just literature.
No, I mean even.
Could just put a table in the hallway out here.
Yeah, I don't know, this pictorial atlas. I believe may have been. Put together by a publisher and then sold. And I don't know if it was sold by Cassouth County or how that was. This dedication, I'm pretty sure was probably put together by Cassouth County, but people would give it away to people. When they want it, and this soil survey is actually by the USDA. Cooperation with Iowa Agriculture.
So is that?
So this is a, this is a document that we probably received, just a bunch of them.
Okay.
Um, I don't believe that this would have been for sale.
Okay.
No, I, I have one of those mailed.
Yeah, I think a lot of people have. Maps of their different areas.
You got a couple of them?
Oh, yeah.
No, Don, he said he had a couple of them.
Yeah, Don, we have to, do you know how you got them?
No.
Iowa State Extension would be interested in seeing.
Wow, they all have them.
They, yeah.
Every bank got them, they, it just gives you your soil types and all your soil maps.
Sure.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I'm fairly confident that today that is available online.
Yep. It is. Well, I guess we can put it out there, email libraries.
See if anyone's interested.
Interested and what doesn't go.
Okay, well, Tammy and I just kind of work together on getting these disposed of.
I'd be interested.
Yeah.
In all three, but, yeah, I don't have a copy of any of them.
I don't, I don't think that I would either.
I never got mailed one in nineteen eighty seven. It was here.
Alright, well, I, I'll put a copy on the board. Of everything, and you guys can do whatever you want with it and then we'll go from there.
Maybe talk to the local schools too, because, you know, history classes and stuff, they could possibly look at some of that stuff and.
We got two schools left.
Yeah.
Maybe three of your glue buckets.
Wouldn't hurt, because our kids go there or.
Must be. Well.
Yeah, I mean, could reach out to different organizations that way, see what we can get accomplished.
Alright, maybe the egg classes would appreciate the soil.
They might.
You know, they could do some.
The egg museum too could. If they don't have any of those materials, they could possibly get some too.
Alright, and then I saw that solar ordinance was on the agenda.
Yeah, we, we didn't talk on that yet, we were just gonna do it at the end of our meeting, after range, after we checked off all the other business.
Very good.
Did you want us to call you when we're back to that or?
I suppose I should listen.
Be good.
Okay, yep.
Alright, that's all.
Did the zoning commission have anything else on the agenda or was that about it?
Election of officers.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that, no, it's just, it is called for this.
Sure.
Particular.
Sounds good.
Anything else for general discussion? Doug, did you have anything else?
I did not, I'm sorry.
Okay, I thought you said that, just confirming.
Okay.
Alright.
I can go grab her.
You go grab her, yeah.
Do you want to sign?
Yep, yep.
Thank you, Doug.
You bet.
Thanks.
You too, or we'll see you later. See you, Don. Well, drainage, why, be an easy one for me to go out and. Observe, I'll be mile away all spring.
It's in your backyard.
Yeah. It's like a bunch of hair or something in here. Chambers Farm on just the, right across the road from Don. Bachelor, so.
So you'll be relatively flexible.
I went down here last week and got some parts from Massey Ferguson.
Oh, Carol.
They were working ground, me that.
And I had a couple guys are out.
On the old Griesman farm and then another one due southeast of there.
Yeah, a couple guys are out.
South of Casey's place where Casey.
On the west side of the road.
Yeah.
Yeah. They were working at. Um, McGregor there by.
And it's part of the.
Studers is a site there on the east side of the gravel road, but it's. On the south side of McGregor, there's an organic field, they were working that.
Oh, yeah.
She's in the office by herself right now, it'll be just a couple minutes.
Worked on the windiest day.
Everything quiet drags out there.
Yeah, I think I got ink all over my hands already.
I think that was.
It'll be, well, it'll be, his mom, yeah.
I went through the big city on the way down.
That looks better.
A verbiage?
Yep.
Yeah.
I drove past the big city.
It's a sight to the whole. Don't wait.
See a railroad track.
Yep.
And an Alice Schumacher tractor.
Yep.
It's a WD.
Might take us.
You have an owl calendar?
I ain't one.
Oh, you don't, okay.
Yeah, I had one once.
Okay.
I always got a pick out of that, more power than it had traction. It was my permanent, my nursery truck.
Okay. What do you have now?
International and John Deere.
Okay.
Too many. Gets expensive to buy batteries, keep them on running. Batteries aren't cheap.
Nothing's cheap anymore.
No, no. If you know, I made tractors own yet, you don't have enough.
It's a good philosophy.
Linda's cousin from Texas was up once and she was going through all the buildings, she likes John Deere. She was, she, how many John Deere tractors you have? I said, no, I don't wanna know. But she was counting lawn mowers.
Okay. The lawn tractor. The lawn tractor.
To people from Texas, it's probably.
I couldn't figure out what she's talking about little ones. Finally dawned on me she's talking about lawn mowers. Why somebody that's an attorney in Texas would think that tractors are neat is beyond me.
Because they don't see them every day.
Something different. They got more cattle and. Or swamp.
Works for T Bone Pickings. You remember T Bone Pickings? He's oil. That's a pretty common name twenty years ago. He was one of the big wheels in oil. How about Dallas? Last name.
Black sand of Dallas?
All right, you guys ready? Um, the policy, um, I put some language into it here under. It'd be kind of the fourth paragraph from the bottom, all improvements. We already had that that will have a petition be sent to an engineering firm per Iowa code. But then added behind that is to increase notification for improvement projects. Will send a postcard to all landowners in the district informing them. Of the timing of the bid letting and any other important information as deemed necessary for that project, so. Thought kind of specific to the key points, but generic enough that we can customize it a little bit if there's anything. Falls in there, um, and then I guess with our discussion from. Earlier this morning with um public discussion. Like I said, with televising multiple places, we've ran into issues with. Connections butting in into the tile system and causing the camera not to be able to go past them, so. Roger, do you know if that section in the drainage um? Records for one thirty, is that in the same, is that the same for all of them?
You're not supposed to impede the flow.
Special Y.
Yeah, is that something we need to make a point of communicating with contractors that Ys are. Required to tap into them into the county mains because that's. Probably going to be more and more of an issue going forward and and yeah, like was said earlier with all. All the tiling that's going on, you have multiple connections to that. It can definitely affect the water flow.
You're gonna get more of that, more plastic is installed.
Exactly, so.
I'm planning on doing that, you know, we have a lot of contractors and out of county, out of state.
Well, I think if you just have a. We don't have that many contractors as far as who do work with and just regular re- repair request work in the county. Just to send a, here's the policy of, you know, or here's here's what the board expects. And they can just have it on record. It's not like we gotta send it to them every time.
But what I'm saying is you got the people installing the tile to begin with, the ones that should be using the correct material. And we have quite a few different contractors.
I mean, there's there's some from around the area that do do work in the county, but I think a lot of the work that gets done here is. People fairly local. I mean, there's some around the edges, but um.
But then you have kind of well, like with Roy Metzger's request. Mark Fair doing the work on it. Mark Fair's not a contractor per se. It was just doing work for his cousin, you know, it's it's a.
And it's, I mean, it's not necessarily gonna be. And there's stuff that's already been installed in the last five, ten, fifteen years that we're not gonna go catch and dig up every single connection, so I mean. I I don't know that it's something you try and. I I wouldn't recommend trying to slap some fine associate with it or anything like that. I just think if. If we can make that. A little bit of a point of emphasis to try and do better going forward, maybe, um. I don't know, I just think it'd be maybe worthwhile to highlight. Cause a lot of times, I mean, it it depends on the field and the district tile that's already there, but a lot of times they'll put in a sub main or whatever and they're. Their private connections, they do a lot on their private lines, but then you might have. One or two main points where it taps into the main tile that goes through, so hopefully it wouldn't be that big of a. An issue.
I don't think it's an issue. I think if you're getting people educated that they need to buy Y connectors and have them on hand because that's. That's really where the problem starts is they're. They're doing a project and what what do you have in your toolbox is is a butt connector for two. Plastic tile, so you shove that into the main and then throw some fabric over it. You know, is that the right way to do it? No, but that's what's handy at the moment.
Well, and. Yeah, so it would be some education conversation with contractors, but I think if we see stuff, then maybe we could. Say, hey, let's let's try to do this in the future.
Well, they should. I'm I'm gonna say this is the start of the project, so. At any time that they would do it correctly, it should be when you start a project, so let's. Try and educate the contractors to use Y connectors instead of butt connectors going into county mains.
And and if we put a quick sentence in here to that degree, it's not like. It's gonna be the end of the world either way, but yeah, it would be the education tool that could be used after that.
Yeah, sentence in there about GPS.
I was gonna ask about that too. Is that a new thing?
No, that wasn't there before.
Some of the contractors don't have to. What do you call it on their phones to do it?
Well, and that's, yeah, that was discussed when we put it in there, but it's it's a. Subscription program, yes, but for a and that's why we did it at fifteen thousand, it's jobs of that magnitude. Probably are doing enough business in the county to justify having the program and. That's where that's where we get the information. So like if you look at the map right now, I mean, there's. There's projects, uh, well, it's less than fifteen thousand, but I mean, we did the televising, um. Just north of Bancroft, and if you look at that, you can look. I put I put the points on because it was less than that, but they flagged it as they went through. And I've got GPS locations. Roughly every so many feet and you can see exactly where it's at. Now, it generally follows what's on the map, but. Um, it's it's definitely off, I mean, I can tell you here how far it's off. Just there, it's off three hundred and sixty feet. I mean, and that's that's common when you actually get out there. But but by having this program and having our maps electronic and all the money we spent to get them electronic. This, these points will allow Luke to go in and shift those lines and make them accurate in the future, so. If we if we do the work today, the results will show down the road and to me, it's. I mean, it's a no brainer, but no, that is not new. That was in there before. I don't know that we get it for all of them over fifteen, but that's the. Policy that's in place.
Mine shut off again. Haven't used it on there.
Your program? I'm on mine pretty regularly. And like we had a request to locate a tile south of south of Lead Yard and. That's less than a fifteen thousand dollar request, but if you guys pull up the map, you can see exactly where it's at and. In some ways, it's similar to what's on the map, but the map doesn't really show exactly what happens, so.
Take Wrightel and Triple E are the only ones that use it, I think.
Wrightel and Zach.
Yeah, and Zach.
I don't I I don't know if Triple E's really used it much. I think they have it. I know they did at one point in time, but I don't know if they've used it very often. But yeah, I mean, and we could add a. Sentence about putting putting Ys into for connections into county mains and and try and educate from there too, but. The postcard is a piece we had already discussed, so that's the substantial change. Do we wanna add a sentence about Ys being used to connect into district facilities?
Wouldn't hurt.
I think it.
Wouldn't hurt anything.
I think it would be an easier form to communicate than running around with paperwork from a hundred and. Twenty-five years ago. Or whenever it was. Put into the district records.
The biggest thing I see over Ys is when they saw connections into the old cement tile, they dropped the. But into the piecing and they never pull it out.
And and that causes an issue for televising too.
Because it can't jump over it. Those should be picked out of the tile. They should never be left in.
Yeah, completely agree.
But I'd see that in everything that we televise is. When they use a hammer and beat the heck out of it to get it in, usually they pick the pieces out, but it seems like when they saw it, they don't.
It seems so simple, but. Yeah, I and I think part of that is just the education of it because. They don't realize the impacts of leaving, what what the impacts of leaving that in the system are to. What happens after they leave.
And and all contractors are guilty of that. I'm not picking on anybody.
I I would agree.
I've I've seen it in just about everything we televise.
Some maybe do it a little more than others, but they've all done it once or twice. Well, do we wanna, if we add a sentence in about the Y, uh, I don't know that we need to have it back on the agenda again, but. You guys want anything in particular for that? And then we can just do this policy plus that sentence.
Well, you can just all connections will be done in compliance with the Drainage Go to Iowa, which is a Y.
Which requires a Y.
Just a sentence like that would be sufficient, Linda.
Do do we wanna do a motion for approving the policy plus that sentence and then? And we can get that put in after the meeting here? You wanna make a motion to approve or? I'll second it. Any other discussion? Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. All right, um, we have a repair request, Marge. Broken tile.
I have a repair request for District Seventy-Eight in Buckle Township. Uh, section fourteen. It's a broken tile, needs repair, uh, ten inch tile. I'm gonna give it to Grant that's in his backyard. Trump Hill will go fix it.
So are any discussion, otherwise I'd entertain a motion to direct supervisors to take care of their requests. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
Uh, request I had last week for Beaver Dam. Drove out there and there's two Beaver Dams. I just wanted that permission to take both of them out on the same request.
You got anything you wanna visit with us about?
Well, I see in the favor in your proceeding from the fifth of March, there's a bill paid to the law firm. Charged it. Lateral two on three and four.
Can we pull that bill or look at it? For that lawsuit, okay, so that is, that's a bill for um Goodwin from for the lawsuit Joe Goshi filed against the district.
I've heard nothing. I mean, you paid a bill for what? For the lawyer? Or what?
Or a lawsuit Joe Goshi has filed.
And there was a payment a while back for, I think this was about five thousand, then it was three thousand, so what has he done?
Do you want the actual lawsuit or what the attorney?
I'd like to know what been visiting, which which you've come up with on that. We've never heard anything when I talked to you Kyle about, you know, I said you were gonna have something on the additional.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't scheduled anything yet. Um, I need to get a letter put together. Um, to try and send out like we discussed before, but I haven't gotten that put together yet, um. And that lawsuit, I don't know, does the the invoice would have a little description on there for the.
What's the lawsuit? I didn't, I haven't heard. About what you just said.
I don't know which.
Where's the lawyer from?
Goodwin's down in Ames, I believe. We use, we use Goodwin for anything that we have, um, that would go to court, otherwise Hudson is our attorney for. General questions and stuff, so we use both of them.
County attorney has nothing to do with it?
No, never has. I don't think he's ever done anything for drainage.
He's allergic to drainage.
It sounds like that.
Yeah, that's that's criminal prosecution for what happens in the county, um.
The last county attorney that did anything with drainage ended up to be a judge and what's his name? I don't, I can't remember. He used drainage issues. I think he's the last one.
That would have been. Probably would have been a while back.
And he was good at it and. Right now, I don't think there's much going on with this other than filing the papers. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think it's mostly filings, but we haven't, we haven't had a conversation with him about it as a board and I haven't talked to him.
Well, we did have one on the telephone. The judge overruled our objection because he went past the date that he should have, if you remember.
For the filing of the bond.
So now. We have to go on and proceed with the case, which should have been thrown out. Cause he did go past the date of filing, but the judge overruled us.
It was, it was within a day, so they felt that was good cause. It was within a day, so they felt that was good cause to allow it to continue, so.
He wants to hear the case.
Yeah.
He wants to hear why.
So, there's, I don't know that there's a whole lot more specifics we can give you.
Remember then, is that, or is that it?
Yeah.
For a lack of better words, yeah, I mean, there's not, there's not really anything substantial going on.
As far as the context of the case, that hasn't changed.
No, and the case itself would be public record. Um, so we could get you the case number and you could see that, but I mean. Can't talk about litigation too much that way, um. Anything we do talk about with our attorney that we go into closed session for, so, I don't. I don't know that there's a whole lot besides the actual case and like doc, like the bills. That would show the work he's done, I don't know, there's much.
Are we gonna continue to get bills from the lawyer for this?
Till the case is settled, probably, and there's nothing we can do about that.
You guys are trustees for the district, right?
Right.
And?
And? If we get sued, the state code says we have to defend ourselves for our actions. And I don't know that we did anything that was any different than any other drainage issue, so.
Un- unfortunately, that's, that's what it costs and when lawsuits are filed. It's.
Well, it doesn't hurt as much if you don't pay for it.
Well, we don't have that option.
Neither do we.
No.
That sounds like no options.
That's kind of the.
Curious how it come down every month of September, I just, I hadn't heard anything from you.
Yep.
And didn't know, and.
Unfortunately, that's the situation we're in.
Unfortunately, that is a oversight to add on that cost to that. Piling on green two, right? And where are we at now with that, is it up to date on, on the green two, Marge, you got anything on that? Is it still whatever?
It's, it's mostly, there were some waivers that were signed.
Ever brought in, right?
Right. Still collecting on that.
Right. Any time period when that will be finished? Okay, depends on the interest you get.
Ten year waivers.
Right.
So, as they come in.
But our amount that's on waivers is enough to cover?
Yes.
What, what's on the account at least?
Besides whatever the new charges are.
Well, yeah, that's.
Unfortunately. Didn't learn a lot.
We know about as much as we do.
Yeah.
Ouch.
Yep.
Two ouches.
That's, that's a good word, ouch.
Ouch, yeah. Thank you.
Have a good day.
They're all good, some are better.
Yep, well, have a better day then.
Did you skate in from Bancroft?
I slid all the way down. Yeah, the roads are, you know, drive slower, yeah, that's pretty simple. You don't have to drink sixty, do you?
No, I came in at forty miles an hour, nobody passed me.
Well, I drove down about thirty-five, I didn't have their passing me.
Were they?
It's fine. I wasn't in the big hurry.
Oh, that's good, see ya.
See ya.
Alright, um. You have anything else for drainage, beside, we have our meeting this afternoon?
So, do you have options for the Zoom or calling?
I don't know, I think I'm gonna Zoom mine and then drive, get the roads icy, I'm not going.
They just, they just moved my Care Connections meeting to Zoom at one thirty.
Okay.
So.
I was planning on going up, I'll go up either way.
So, I don't know, depends on what the roads are like at two o'clock.
Well.
Are you driving out, Marge, or are you just zooming?
I'm gonna either Zoom or the phone call.
Yeah, that would be fine.
My kiddo's at home, school got canceled, so I'm gonna Zoom.
Oh, school canceled?
School got canceled, yeah. Um, I did talk to Colin Klingboil.
Okay.
Jake's in Westryard, uh, apparently the last few months. Colin is now the only person in that office doing any type of drainage work, and so he's been, um. Behind, and they did hire someone that's coming out of college this spring, but they're not gonna start till June. Um, and so, he's trying to get a, they had a bunch of reclassification to do before tax time, you know, all that, so. Um, so he's behind and he is not going to meet his initial. Vocalized deadline of, of having a hearing before planting, that's, that's not gonna happen. Even if we did it today, I mean, that would have to be.
Publication.
May by the time, yeah, so, um, so we're gonna shoot for, like. Maybe middle to end of June, um, cause he's, he's got some stuff for the reclasses to wrap up. And then, and then this project will be his main focus going forward from there, um, cause he's got a lot of the. The work preliminary work done on it, just time to write the report, so, um. So hopefully, uh, in the next couple, few weeks, he'll, he'll be able to work on that again and, and, uh. Move forward with that, so, that's kinda just what it is, I guess.
We got any further on green four with the outlet pipes?
Yeah, yeah, they're, I don't know if they're all done, um, but I know. Even before winter really hit hard, they were close to one sixty-nine, so, yep, so they should be. If they're not done now, they should be done soon.
And the tile hooked back up again that were broke off, they, there was two, two that weren't backed up, they get them done.
The ones on the east side of Bancroft?
Yeah, um, no, there was some north of Bancroft that weren't hooked up.
For who?
I'll have to go back and look.
Along the ditch or for a different? Um.
There was a couple private outlets that weren't hooked up, and I can't remember where they're at, now I'll have to go back and look what I've seen when I drove. It was towards the north, north end, one of them. Figured the guy that.
Ed Stein?
Yeah, and Ed Stein was one.
Oh, yeah, that's all been done, um, but I don't, I don't know that he ever said there was private tile that weren't hooked up. Um, or that were missed, there, the only one that I know was Keith Vasquez.
Well, Vasquez, yeah, I remember that one.
But, but we couldn't find them, I mean, they, they dug out there for hours and hours and couldn't find them, so. We'd said we'd have, and I talked with Keith about that multiple times, I said if we get spot where you see a wet spot. And we can go out and find it, I said we can find it then, but until we, I mean, they had no idea for a defined location. So until we get a place where we can actually try and find something, it's pointless to dig out there for days and days. So, yeah, I mean, that one, that one's the only one that I'm aware of, the tile were potentially not hooked into the ditch. Um, the rest were just repairing what was out there.
There was bad at laying north of the septic. On the other side of the road.
By the treatment plant?
Yeah.
What was laying there?
Clay battings. From tile, but I assumed it was a private tile that didn't get hooked back up, but it will show up this year.
They might have been stuff that was out there, or it might have been stuff that was out there that has new pipe on it.
I didn't see a new pipe around it, but I did see a bunch of cement tile that were laying.
Right by the.
No, it's in north of there, I put an X in my book.
I don't remember ever hearing about that.
Yeah, we'll find it.
Yeah, and they're, they got a bunch of material out on sixty sub four, I don't think they've started digging yet, but. Yeah, and there's. Should be getting close to starting on that. But yeah, if you find those, let me know.
Yeah.
Anything else for drainage? Marge, anything else for us? Okay, thank you. Alright, do we wanna do?
Just do a lot of in-board discussion.
Board discussion, then we can go back to.
Come up and finish it off.
Hey, reminder, one o'clock today, we have our property tax public hearing. And then of course, two thirty, we guys have the meeting in Blue Earth next week. We're in April already, but liquor license for River Road Golf Course. And then we have a set, a date and time for the budget hearing, requested April sixteenth at eight thirty. So, we can't set the date and time for the budget hearing at this afternoon's meeting. Because all that we can do at this afternoon's meeting is hold the, the budget hearing, there's no approval, no nothing, all we can do is hold the hearing. And you can't set the date and time until after we've had that hearing, so the next time you'll, we'll be meeting will be Tuesday. So, um, I will already have sent the notices to the papers so that they have them. It won't be published till Wednesday and Thursday, so we'll set, we'll set the date and time Tuesday. But everything will already be ready to go so that they can go forward as soon as you approve it. Um, in order to make the ten and twenty day deadline, so.
So, we won't have a public hearing until the twenty-third?
Sixteenth.
Sixteen?
Okay.
That's what I'm proposing.
If you get it published, then.
It'll be published next week.
The third, third and fourth?
Yes.
Then you can do it on the sixteenth?
Yes.
That's enough days?
Yep.
That's ten and twenty, yeah, so yeah, that would be.
Well, you can only have, you can't have more than twenty, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be, yeah. Anyone got any issues with the sixteenth? Sounds good.
One thing that was brought up, um, was the time that we do the public hearings. And I was asked the, the, if there was any way that we could do the public hearings for budget stuff. And tax levy stuff in the evenings when more people will be available.
We've never done it that way.
Right.
So, that would be something.
I don't know, I guess. I think that's kind of. One of the reasons we have a representative, the supervisor, you can call your supervisor and complain. I mean, and that, and, and people do. And, uh, you should take that into consideration when you're voting on anything.
Usually we have them first thing in the morning.
Right.
So.
And usually.
We don't waste anybody's time if they come.
Right, right, so, if you gotta be to work at eight or nine. You know, if it's a, a serious or important thing to be at the board meeting.
Eight thirty.
Usually you're able to come right away for a few minutes and then leave, but, yeah.
Sure, yeah, it was just brought up and I said.
Yeah, yeah.
And discuss it and.
Sixteenth.
If they really want, you know, school is sixty-two percent between college and school of your land taxes. For rural area, and the counties is only twenty-five percent. So, if you're really, really concerned, you should be going to school.
Just had their levy last night, or their public hearing, I mean, last night.
I think they had, that they had that last night.
Mm-hmm, I know some people went to it.
That's the majority of your taxes.
Right, mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, um, but what I was gonna say, the sixteenth, I will potentially be gone in St. Louis, um, on that Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, that, Sunday through Wednesday.
I'm just, just looking here in twenty, twenty-two.
If we're not planting, I will be gone, which we probably won't be, so, okay.
The twenty-twenty-two levy, college and school is fifty-seven percent, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, college and school is sixty-two percent. So they've went up five percent in a year. So you're, you're asking for taxes that drastically increased at the school.
Oh, I know that, I know it has, and it's changed a lot, it's coming from Laverne to Algonah.
Yeah, it's gonna be the same thing this year, it's gonna be another percentage.
Yeah, if I remember our initial conversation with Algonah School, it's that, oh, your taxes are gonna go down. When you transfer school district. I didn't believe that for one minute.
Alright, yeah.
I think that's it, we've been getting lots of questions about the notices, lots of questions about the notices. People don't understand, it's hard to explain, if you don't understand, rollbacks, if you don't understand, it's, it's hard to explain.
Yep.
And it's not something, not a conversation you can have in thirty seconds to a minute, so, um, people are confused. Um, they think that it, that it's showing what their property tax is gonna do on the, on the mailing. And that's not what the mailing was for, so it, it is confusing to them.
I get tired of telling people, no, that's not what your taxes might be.
It's, it's. It's very confusing because the example only shows one specific picture. And I get it from the legislator, legislative perspective at the state level, you can't have a hundred different examples on there, but.
It's confusing though.
It's, it's very confusing.
Well, it sent the wrong message to people, I mean, it basically didn't say what it really is going to be.
Right.
Exactly.
I had several people calling me about it too, confusing, yeah.
I got tired of explaining it.
Yep.
But, no, that's not the complete picture.
Yeah.
Right.
But then people say, well, then how come you guys sent us this letter, you know, why did you put false numbers in here, or whatever it is, and you know, it's like, well.
It's not false numbers.
No, I know, it's just.
It's just.
But that's how people take it.
It's an example.
It's an example and the situation is more complex than the paper describes.
But people get fired up when they're on the phone, yeah.
Oh, so.
Oh, well.
Right.
Trying to explain it, so.
Yeah, well, I gotta make sure I understand it first too.
Alright, Roger, you have anything?
No. Yeah, Green meeting tomorrow.
IDDA, okay. Where's that one at?
chemistry.
Okay.
Nothing in the agenda that's new or interesting, but.
I had North Iowa Community Action last Tuesday, um, just. It was, it was a short meeting, uh, that I've seen from them, but, um. I think it was till seven thirty and we were done about six thirty. um I think it was till seven thirty and we were done about six thirty, and yeah, just approving contracts and, and formality stuff, um salaries and et cetera, so. Nothing too exciting there. Uh I've got character connections this afternoon, as I mentioned, and then um Summit, I don't know if you guys saw, but Summit canceled their informational hearing beginning of May that they were gonna have um for the new proposed drought from Lakota. Uh they're looking potentially to have something maybe in June or July, so.
Yeah, cuz of that U P S letter.
Yep, yep.
Pushed them back.
Girls pushing back.
Right, so they did cancel that, um and to be held at a later date. But otherwise, that's about all I got.
Alright, um. I had um Rural Action Caucus meeting for N A C O on the twenty-first, and I forgot my sticky note, but I had taken a picture of it, but um one of the first thing, one of the first speakers was from Amazon talking about their project Kuiper, which is low earth orbit satellites, and it's for broadband or internet provider service that way, so it's similar. Similar but different to Starlink with Elon Musk and all that, um but it.
Elon and Jeff are going at it?
Kind of, yeah, there's, I'm sure for a hundred thousand reasons, there's differences to their programs. Um but it will be deployed in four phases, if I remember right, four or five. And they're starting at the poles and working their way towards the center of Earth. So Minnesota and I think even some in Iowa will be just inside that first band that would get coverage. And I believe if, if I remember right, they were talking about um having that online within the next eighteen months, so um give or take, that, that could be up here relatively soon. A couple of the commissioners from Minnesota were asking questions about it and had their concerns whether it would um be available, especially in northern Minnesota where there's heavier tree cover and stuff like that. And of course, they said it depends on site location and stuff like that, but they said generally if you have a clear line of sight to the sky, you'll be able to have access, so like the roof of your house or whatever, if you can see straight up, you should have access, so for, whether it's for any areas of our county where people don't have affordable internet or others around the area, um that may be an option moving forward on top of the other options that are on there as well. Then we had a speaker talking about Gatsby, and one of the pieces I wrote down, just kind of interesting bit of information I didn't know, was there's a committee, GASSAC is the initials, but it's an advisory council for Gatsby. And N A C O has a rep representative on that board for advisory stuff, so if anyone's got any questions, comments, concerns, anything like that, it could be um potentially funneled through N A C O and try and get directly to the people that are evaluating that stuff and making changes, so.
Okay.
Um then Friday, I had C I J D C meeting, a lot of things, or um a lot of things in general are going good, but we had had quite a bit of discussion over the last several months about exigent rates, and I think we finally kind of got to a, a solution where, or a a structure that clearly outlines how certain situations would be um compared to each other, and how they, how those situations would progress through the different cost structures, because you go from a hundred and forty dollars a day for the standard rate, all the way up to four hundred dollars a day for members for extreme exigent right now, so there's there's quite a difference in price, and there's been some confusion about what it entailed to actually justify that cost, um. So I think we made some progress with that. Then I had a N A C O Agonero Affairs Committee meeting yesterday, but I didn't I wasn't able to catch all of it, with some phone calls that came in, so. Um and then, yeah, our drainage meeting this afternoon. Um. Yeah, I think, I think that's the majority of what I have, um. Okay, so. Anything further for general discussion that way? Otherwise, we can go to solar stuff, um. Yeah, good, um do you remember what day it all was?
November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
That's right.
You gonna have a five minute break?
Yeah, tell me ten minutes, come up.
I'll call him in five minutes. For office.
Did you watch the basketball game last night?
When I got home, I had the Republican meeting, and then I watched it once I got home, so we saw the end of it, so.
It was a good game.
It was a good game.
Yeah.
It was a very good game.
Now they go to New York?
Oregon, isn't it?
Hmm, that's out east somewhere, yeah.
Uh west, I thought it was Oregon. I'm pretty sure it's Oregon.
Is it?
Mm-hmm, cuz I have a friend that's flying out on Thursday, and I'm pretty sure it's Oregon. You mean the Sweet Sixteen, I'm pretty sure.
They play Colorado Buffalos, huh?
Well, maybe they, maybe theirs is different.
Um, that's a lot of water. Says Albany, Region Two in Albany.
Okay, maybe that's.
Isn't that New York? The state of New York, I mean.
Uh I swore it was Oregon, but maybe there's more than one location.
What's that? Region two. Women's championship.
It was in Oregon.
Oh, they play Oregon softball.
Or are you talking?
Women's.
Yeah, women, they played for Oregon, that's our next game, but it says here it's in Albany.
Because, well, cuz our friends are flying out to Oregon. On Thursday, so.
Maybe it's right. Mon- Saturday, March thirtieth?
Yeah, so it, it was in New York, it will be in Portland, Oregon.
Yep, now it's in, two thirty, tickets are a hundred and eighty dollars, that I see it.
So it, yeah. So the, the.
Well, they're cheaper than they were, you know.
There's two separate locations.
There is?
Yep, one's in Albany, New York, the other's in Portland, Oregon.
They're both Region Two?
I don't know what region it is, it says Sweet Sixteen slash Elite Eight for both.
Hmm.
Did you guys hear about the bridge in Baltimore?
Yeah.
Crazy. Container ship hit the bridge and knocked most of the bridge down.
Ouch, a lot of people.
Seven cars that they, that went into the river and they um only recovered two people. And I believe the rest are still missing.
Yep, there's two sites going on, Roger, one in New York and one in Oregon.
Okay.
So. Iowa State. Or Iowa, Iowa is in Albany.
Did you just talk about anything yet, or?
Okay.
Alright, um we can go back to discussion on solar ordinance.
Okay.
Does anyone have any preference on where we start?
No preference, I guess, um.
Just per our previous discussions, we, because the drainage issues are already outlined, there's no current zoning ordinance. Correct? As far as drainage district crossings, we're not placing over drainage district tile and, and et cetera, et cetera.
Well, that's not a zoning ordinance.
Or that, excuse me, that'd be part of our drain, part of our drainage procedures, I, I said that wrong, thank you. So what's being questioned then is, is, uh, what we would like to include for setbacks and how to go about setbacks? Would that be about the main point of discussion then?
Yeah, I mean, that would be a.
What else are we looking to include?
Um, one of the things, and depending on if we wanna go through each of those other ordinances and kind of section stuff out, but like Green Counties has, um, number sixteen point seven, they have about a community information open house.
Yep.
And.
There is a few when they have that, something similar.
Then following under that, it says that prior to submitting a permit or anything of that nature, um, they have to have a open house. Purpose of the open house is outreach with the intent of providing information to the community in an informal setting. Um, it does not qualify as a government meeting or a formal public hearing. There's some other criteria there, but, um, one of the, like, sixteen point seven point four two says meeting date, time, and location, it says it shall be held on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday evening at an accessible location within five miles of the site of the proposed project or at the county courthouse. And I think that would, I mean, just some of that language to keep it either here at the courthouse as a central location or on, or in any of our buildings for that matter. Um, or close to the project, I think, rather than like we compared to some of the informational meetings for pipeline for like Lakotas that was down here in Albona or whatever. I mean, there's some of those keeping that close to the project and, um, talks about the content of what should be, what should be explained at the open house and responding to concerns. And then after that, there's different setbacks. From property lines, from dwellings, from right-of-way, wildlife management, state recreation, buildings, cemeteries. I just thought that community, like, the community open house and that sort of thing would be a good thing to incorporate.
Or would it just be simpler to, instead of going through lots of different language and how to go about things, what is our, what is our goal with the ordinance? What are we hoping to achieve, I guess, is, um, by, by implementing a sort of solar ordinance or amendment to a zoning ordinance? What, what are we hoping to achieve as a board? Um, for me personally and then listening to constituents, I, I just assume not have commercial solar projects on agricultural land. Period. That's just where I'm at. I, just if I was, well, I do live next to two different fields, one's right in my backyard. And if a, if a solar, commercial solar project went in a hundred and fifty feet from my property line, I would not appreciate that. You know, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's.
There are other solar projects already in the county, um.
But not in a commercial, large scale.
Not to that scale.
Right, right. I'm fine if you want panels on your house or your hog building.
Well, and that's, that's something we probably need to define as well because there would, we'd need to define a threshold of what qualifies.
Right. Cause even, I think, Gold Eagle up at Tyke, that's probably the largest.
Probably, and that's.
I don't, I don't know of anything else larger in the county than that. Doug, is that the largest project currently in the county, as far as you know?
I have no idea, I have no idea what the output is.
Sure.
So, and what largest that output is called.
Yep, yep.
Yeah. Well, and I would.
Would that classify as commercial, because it is commercial?
Well, but at the same time, I mean, it's still producing for that facility. I would imagine, I haven't asked them specifics, but I would imagine it was designed to support the energy needs of their facility right there, um.
I would consider commercial being if they're setting up a, um, solar facility with the intentions of selling the energy to customers, um, and not just for a specific location, like a specific business or, or something, no.
But let's just say we, okay, we signed a letter of intent for a methanol, or a letter of interest for a methanol facility. Methanol facility gets built.
Or the ethanol plant in Lakota.
Or the ethanol plant in Lakota, they already have, you know, wind turbines just specifically for that ethanol plant. So you're talking about a larger scale operation just for that project, you know what I'm saying? So it's just.
There probably should be megawatt numbers or, or an acre number that would be that threshold, in my opinion.
What you gotta realize is that that solar farm, but panels are producing energy that if that facility is not using that energy at that particular moment, it does get pushed into the grid. So they are selling energy back to the grid, no matter what you do.
Correct. There's no tracing it to, or it, it came from X place, and, yeah.
Yeah. And I, I just thought about this, probably should've thought about it earlier, but, um, Roger, did you say you have a conflict?
I own several soil, solar panels in a solar farm that is located in St. Ansgar, Iowa.
Oh.
They take, produce energy, put it on the grid, and then it comes off my electric bill.
True.
Is that a solar commercial project, or is that a, it's a community solar project?
That's kind of interesting.
Are you gonna regulate those or not, so?
So that's kind of interesting. So you, as a disinterested party in St. Ansgar, Iowa, you know, had the opportunity to purchase a couple of panels within a project?
Right.
Well, that's interesting.
You buy the panels and then whatever output comes off of the solar farm, your percentage gets deducted from your electric bill.
Okay.
So I'm just asking you, is that a commercial project, being discussed several acres of panels?
Probably would be, in my opinion.
Yeah, but that's a different scenario.
Yeah.
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 It gets that into the grid.
Well.
The electrons don't come to my place.
Yeah. I guess I don't, I don't know that completely outlawing solar is my intention, um, but I think I would compare it to things I've said before for wind and other topics in general. I think the, like, the master matrix, master matrix is an example for hog buildings where there's a setback from occupied dwellings specifically, and then there's an opportunity for a waiver if that landowner is acceptable to whatever terms they come up with. So that would be my thoughts or opinion that we put setbacks in to protect all landowners in the county and then have an option for a waiver if they are negotiating with their neighbors and on, in a good faith effort, there hopefully will be little to no issues, um.
You're talking setbacks from?
Property lines or.
Property lines or setbacks from residents?
All the above.
Well, this, this includes both six hundred from dwelling units, hundred and fifty from a property line. Cause not necessarily all properties have a dwelling on them.
Correct. And those numbers obviously are.
Well, it's another county.
Subject, yeah.
I was just pointing out that they are, they are, they are included in pretty much all the ordinances as different things.
And we have both, both thresholds for the wind turbine ordinance and all that, so I would say both thresholds. And then obviously there's sections for right-of-way, um, seventy-five feet from right-of-way lines, including future right-of-way lines if known at the time of application, um, which that would, general terminology like that would apply to roads. It would apply to drainage district infrastructure as well, that would have right-of-way associated with it. Um, so it'd be another supporting piece that would reinforce the, the protection on drainage district assets, which would be good.
Josh, what is your goal, or what do you, what do you perceive wanting to happen here? You like the idea of the negotiating aspect of the project, or just let them come, or none at all, or you got any opinions?
I like the negotiating aspect, um, I think we need to do our due diligence in protecting our county facilities and our drainage and, and agricultural land, um, but as far as, you know, outlawing it altogether, oh, you know, we wouldn't, I wouldn't be pumping to that at all because there are some people that may be okay with selling some of their land to doing some of these projects and, and us telling them that they can't sell their land to put in solar projects, I think would be a little bit of a overreach, in my opinion, um. And, but we need to make sure that it's, it's done safely and, and you know, with the right setbacks that, that, uh, you know, protect people's properties. Um, because that is, you know, something that we have to take into account too, is, you know, people buy and sell houses. Well, if there's a solar project that is built right next to someone's property, well, that make it, that'll make it difficult for them to sell their property, you know? That's same thing that we're dealing with with the, the pipeline and the windmills, you know, those same aspects, so.
No, it's different though, county has control over what we do.
Right, right. My biggest concern is with airports, um, but I'm thinking if there is something in place for.
There was, there was stuff in the previous wind, wind turbine ordinance that outlined stuff with airports and there's different versions of that ordinance that we can go back and pull language from to that effect, um.
There's things with airports, with the wind ordinance, unfortunately that never got pushed through, but.
Correct, so that's, there was different pieces of that aspect, but.
But yeah. I do have concerns with, you know, them being built near towns and things like that, that, you know, in my thought process, if there was ever an emergency that we needed to do flights over a town or something like that, you know, are those, the reflection of the panels going to hinder that, you know? That was something that, you know, kind of crossed my mind too, you know, is there somewhere where we need to have it so they're built on the southern side of the, of towns, cause they're always gonna be pointing south. You know, so if that, if ever we needed to have state police or anyone flying over towns or anything like that.
I'm sure the FFA, or FAA, I'm sure the FAA has, you know, regulations for that stuff too.
Sure, yeah. Most of the newer panels won't face south, they track the sun.
They move during the day.
Well, we're in the northern hemisphere, so ninety percent of the time it is going to face a little bit more southern.
You know, they, they arc with the sun now, and it is a southerly direction, but they are at an arc with the sun. You can't just say that it fades south because they started in the east and go over the west.
I don't, I don't know about placing them on the south side of a town, because if you put them on.
You're always gonna be south somewhere north of, somewhere else.
Right, right, I know.
I think that's a.
That's just kind of stuff that I, I've kind of thought about too.
I think the piece that could be incorporated would be a two-mile setback from towns because of their ability to extend zoning jurisdiction, which we discussed with.
And towns can set that anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, that, they have legal authority within two miles.
If, if the county doesn't have zoning.
Correct.
So, I mean, but the two-mile, two-mile radius around towns is reinforced with sections in the code, um.
I don't know about zoning.
What do you mean?
Well, subdivision re- review, but I, I don't know if for zoning, if they have jurisdiction to do anything outside of their own city limits. Just like the county can't zone inside the city limits, it's a jurisdictional type thing.
I, I believe the cities can extend their zoning authority only if the county does not have any zoning. Um, so since we do have zoning, I don't think they can, but the two-mile radius, there's other references and other authorities.
Well, I think the two-mile radius was, um, an aspect that was, you know, for the, the growth of towns.
Future development.
Towns that would be able to redraw their, their, their city lines.
Well, that is correct, subdivision.
Yep.
Incorporation. They're gonna be incorporating that property, so you need to do the subdivision according to cities. They gotta have a plan in, that they are going to be expanding that, that subdivision.
I guess since we've shared opinions here, are you solid on wanting completely outlawing solar or open to?
It's my preference, but it would, but I'm open to discussion.
Open to setbacks with?
Still need to work with each other to get something good set up, so.
Well, I think that, I mean. I think the, I think the majority of citizens and mem, landowners, members in the community, I think, would appreciate. A level of protection, but also still being able to have the ability to. Have economic development in that regard if if everyone can cooperate and get along, and I think if. If it's structured properly with. Community meetings and and getting information out there ahead of having. A boatload of um, easements already signed and all that sort of stuff and I think if it's structured properly and it's. It's got the. Criteria where. It makes everyone a little bit more responsible to have those.
Good door for your neighbors.
Conversations with each other and like I I think that. I think that'll make the playing field. Better as on a community aspect rather than having. Neighbors that have been lifelong friends that hate each other because of. Signing an agreement or whatever. And like with the wind turbine ordinance, we specifically said eminent domain could not be used, some stuff like that, so I think there's. I think there's pieces we could incorporate that would make the process. It would direct the process to be a little bit more responsible and community minded without shutting off. The possibility at all, cause I don't, I don't wanna do that. And we've already got solar to some scale, so.
And another conversation, uh, you brought up economic development, the cities. Do want to have those as possibilities for. Being able to provide power, you know, for the cities and and things like that.
Locally.
Yeah.
And I think that's another thing, I mean, if. If someone. Five miles outside Algonas approached by AMU to put up solar panels, I think. People are maybe less resistant to their friends and neighbors doing stuff that's. Directly impacting them rather than um, some. Massive corporation coming in that's just steamrolling everyone and leaving a cloud of dust behind them. So I think.
I think in that aspect, um, you know, we possibly have something in there that gives priority to local. Utilities versus out of state.
I don't know how you do that.
Yeah, I don't know either, but.
Do you have any language to propose for that sort of thing or?
I think a lot of it could be um. Structured based off the other examples we have, I mean, like Webster's. Ordinance had the community meetings, I think it was almost the same language or very close. As Green County's for community open house. Has the same thing of within five miles of the proposed project or such as city hall or other community center. Or the Webster County Courthouse. And for some of ours, I mean, we could say five or ten miles, I mean, you get certain places or areas. Some towns don't have a great meeting location, but I think if we have the intent of. Keeping it similar to what's out there, I have not had time to put anything together, so I don't have a whole document by any means. But. I guess my big principles would be. Obviously setbacks and we can, we can discuss numbers of that after the structure is put together, but. Setbacks with the opportunity for waivers if those other landowners are. Agreeable to sign waivers similar to the master matrix and then. I guess obviously just a lot of the other legal. Structure, um, but I like the community open houses.
Now, is that including landowners and tenants because there are places that do have.
Landowners, landowners have the rights as that's property rights in America.
Right.
No different than drainage where the tenant is the one that may actually have their crop damaged, but the landowner. Is the responsible party in the district, um, they're the one responsible for the bill and they're the ones that get the credit, so. I don't even know if it'd be feasible feasible or possible to have tenants included in that negotiation if they. If they don't like.
Well, I'm not talking like negotiation, but like informational because.
I mean, it could be in the paper and and informed where they would be able to see it, yes, and they'd be able to attend, but. Um, the actual legal responsibility always always lies with the owner.
Yeah, my, cause my thought was, you know, someone's looking to rent ground or or, you know, place for residence or something. And they don't know that this is coming in, you know, maybe they'll change their mind on renting that ground or, you know.
That's up to communication with their owner.
Right.
That's not for us to dictate.
That's not our problem.
And if they're renting a house and landowner puts up a. Wind turbine or a solar field or whatever else and they don't like it being there.
They can find their tenants.
Find a new place and and that's, I mean, it's not, not saying that to be harsh or whatever, but it's the property owners that have rights.
You're right, that's landlord tenant relations.
Correct, and most, I mean, I can't speak for everyone, but most would communicate that with their tenants and. Hopefully work through that in a positive manner, not all of them would, but that's not up to us to dictate.
I do like Greens, that was one I had mentioned in the past, as far as just pretty straightforward with things.
Yeah.
Um, easy to follow.
I think, did we talk about um, Lynn counties?
Yeah, I had mentioned Lynn's.
I think it would. I mean, decommissioning plan is incorporated here and well, and pretty much all of them, I think, but. Here on the third page of Greens, I mean, there's a glare minimization. I don't know if that would kind of address your concerns there, Josh, with the possible. Other interferences, but there's.
Yes.
Flooding considerations, fencing insecurity, panel height. Talks about the panels should be installed a minimum of twenty-four inches from the lower edge of the panel at maximum tilt to the ground. To encourage establishment of grasses underneath there. There's quite a bit with their roads and. How those would be used, their drainage system is talked about.
Pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, and it's it's more, it's definitely more detailed. Talks about reports to the county on an ongoing schedule, their operation maintenance plan. Talks about disposal and recycle plan for damaged or obsolete facility, equipment or hazardous waste. And then it should, it's not able to be stored on the site, I know there was other places that had issues with that with wind turbines where they were storing blades onsite for a while. It does define repowering. Decommissioning and site restoration.
Thing with the Lynn County one is it also includes the battery, um, battery storage system. Facilities.
Do you remember which page that's on, is that farther back?
That's, I think, towards the end. Yeah, it's section four. Page, oh, there's no page numbers, isn't there? Oh, twenty-one, I guess. Twenty, twenty, excuse me. And before that even.
And that does have. Uh, number three, I don't know what page it's on, but that does have stuff with setbacks. And number two under there has a condition for a waiver, however, if the developer of the facility can obtain and record with the county recorder. A written signed notarized statement from the owner of the property containing said structure waiving the setback. The minimum may be reduced to two hundred feet, which in that could. My opinion, that can be all the way down to zero or whatever if they get. If they get that agreement. But it starts out at five hundred initially and then goes down to two hundred.
Who did that?
For their ordinance, or how many from the back?
Two, three, four.
Maybe five.
Five.
Yeah, at least five.
Seventeen.
Number, number three.
I found it.
Yeah, what page is that, fifteen?
Yeah, yep. Fourteen.
Oh, I see. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I'd do like to have the. Portion in here about the Moheys. Not exceeding the fifty-five threshold.
So the next page?
It's on page seventeen.
Yeah. Yeah.
Won't put a lot of thought into this one.
Yeah.
And that's where I think we could probably. Take some of these and. Copy a majority of their language, put a few tweaks into it for our. Preferences and then have a. Legal review at the end and then go through process and stuff, but.
Your decommissioning costs for soldiers quite high.
Okay, and that would be included in here with their decommissioning plan, but that's good to know.
There's much more waste to get rid of than what you have with wind.
Yeah.
Pretty hazardous materials.
Yeah, and that, yeah.
Well, and the panels.
Yeah, the panels. And the and the wind turbines is one.
Volume.
Yeah, it's, but it's a, it's a big structure, it's not. Hundreds of structures all over.
Right, right.
Just a different, different quantity. But the decommissioning plan is incorporated here many times in Lynn Counties. And even under the batteries, that's got fencing requirements. Which like your think at standard for all of your electrical. Little substations and all that around the county, they they're all fenced off and secure.
Yeah.
I would imagine the company would want that anyway, but.
Yeah, I would agree, the Lynn County one would be a great one to give advice and.
Well, is that something we in the coming couple of weeks, if we wanna read. Through in detail, all of us, the the Lynn one and what we want to. What what we want to omit and what we want to add and come back together.
Yeah, and I don't.
If we have a general template, what we're looking at.
Yeah, did they have the community open houses and stuff in here, I don't remember if they did or not, cause that might be a piece to. And they were pretty comprehensive, but. I don't remember if that was in there. Think I'd maybe focus on Lynn and Green and pick the pieces. Probably primarily Lynn, but even pulling.
Okay, here we go, under on page twenty-one, notification requirements. Uh, to assist in providing adequate notice to interested parties, the applicant for rezoning to the renewable energy overlay district shall, number one. Within fourteen days of filing. Well, then go to number two is what you're after, prior to the application being heard, at the planning and zoning commission meeting, the applicant shall host a public informational meeting held at a location. Reasonably accessible to all identified property owners. Applicants must mail a notice of the public information informational meeting via first class mail to property owners and tenants within. A thousand feet in this one of the subject site.
Maybe we could massage that a little bit differently with Green Counties.
So, so it, the. The point is in there.
Yeah, yeah, just structured differently.
Yeah.
Yes, this has property owners and tenants.
Uh, and they're they're, cause Lynn County is Cedar Rapids, so they're thinking more in terms of. City development, uh, or or urban development, I should say, not necessarily in the city, but urban area.
Yeah. I would think publication in the paper and um, notification to. Property owners for our area and I mean, they could do other things. Online or whatever too on top of that, but I think our conventional sources of notification would be ample, cause if. Even if the direct tenant doesn't get notified, they probably have. Friends in the area that are property owners that would get the same thing, so the word would spread within the community. As long as the general intent is there, I think the mechanics behind it are. As long as the general intent is there, I think the mechanics behind it are. Not the end of the world.
Okay, well, is that the next step? Print it off, make some marks, make some suggestions, come back together and. Go from there.
Works for me. Josh, good with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that.
Doug, do you have any questions or?
Well, I, Green County is a conditional use permit, is what they're really applying for. Lynn County is a change in zoning, uh, with this overlay district. So I, I think you need to, and Cassup County's wind ordinance. Is actually everything is the board supervisors. So you, you need to decide how you want the administration of this approval to happen. Do you want the board of adjustment to be doing it? Do, do you want the board of supervisors to approve the zoning overlay? Uh, do you want the board supervisors to hear everything? Then you also, and I know that it was done a lot with our wind energy, you need to know everything that's going on with. The development of a solar farm, which means you've gotta talk to some developers about everything. You need to cover, it isn't gonna do any good to have an ordinance and then not have. Have to cover something that is needed in a solar energy conversion system. So. Yes, looking at ordinances is good, but there's still research that needs to be done.
Have any of the, any companies in our area specifically contacted you that they're looking at developing projects? Which companies?
It's confidential.
Would any of them be able to come in for a discussion with the board?
I don't think they would, cause they're trying to get easements on land to have talk to farmers and that's pretty confidential. Cause there's more than one company that wants.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure that if you call it Mid-American Energy or Alliant Energy, they're. For example, those are two. Energy providers and they would have people that would be able to help. They hire people to start the process of figuring out if there's ordinances. They hire people to do the communication with landowners. But ultimately, for example, the, the wind energy. Conversion systems in Cassup County, the four large ones are owned by energy producers. But their developers are the ones that actually went got the permits.
Well, I think your first decision is to decide whether you want the board of supervisors to have. Jurisdiction or do you want zoning administrator to have jurisdiction?
I guess, since we have it on wind turbines, I would say it should be the same through the board. Any other thoughts? So then with that, Doug. For the structure of Lynn Counties, um, with the. Overlay renewable energy overlay district. Would that be similar to our wind turbine stuff we have now, or would that be a whole different process, or would we need stuff in there? To clarify that we don't have an overlay, right?
Determination, it's a, it's an allowable use in all of our zoned properties. They just have to make. They gotta do everything according to the ordinance. If they meet everything on the ordinance, they are to be granted the permit. There's not a, there's not a yes or no. Decision whether they can or cannot, you're saying if you're gonna construct, you are going to do it to these terms.
This is the criteria, yeah.
And that, that is something that. Uh, that's awesome. If you're going to do this, here are the zoning terms, and if you do it according to zoning, you can construct it.
Okay, well, anything further for discussion on this today? All right, well, good discussion, we'll focus on that stuff moving forward and. See what we can, see what we can put together. Is there anything? Final to come before the board here, otherwise they would entertain a motion to adjourn. You have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, thanks, any discussion, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed?
Thanks Doug.
Thanks Doug.
You're welcome.